Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee to order for Monday, October 3rd, 2016. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd ask you to please stay standing as we ask for a moment of silence as we remember our good friend, Mr. Albert Porter, Jr. You may be seated. Well, good evening once again, everyone. Welcome. I'd like to remind you that this meeting is being videotaped by DCTV for future broadcasts, and if you have any cell phones, pages, electronic devices, we ask you to please silence them at this time. Roll call, Mrs. Boucher.
Mr. Nunes.
Hello.
Dr. Karafotis.
Here.
Mr. Garth.
Present.
Dr. Jenkins.
Here.
And Mr. Oliver.
Here. Thank you, Ms. Boucher. Next up, we've allotted 10 minutes of time for anyone wishing to speak on any of tonight's agenda items. So, we have allotted 10 minutes for public comment, anyone wishing to speak. I'll take that as a no, which is okay. Thank you very much. Next up, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the regular session minutes of September 12th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Dr. Jenkins. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? I will abstain. Motion carries four to zero, one abstention. Next up, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the executive session minutes, September 12th, 2016.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, with the stipulation that they be held until the matter for which they were intended is completed.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nunes, second by Dr. Karafotis. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I will abstain. Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. Thank you, everyone. At this time, I'd just like to take a brief moment to recognize a couple of retirees that will either be retiring or have retired in the near past, I guess you could say.
As Friday.
Exactly. Claire Bailey, school year secretary at the Quinn Elementary School. We'd like to recognize her for her 12 years of service here for the Dartmouth Public Schools. So, congratulations to Claire Bailey for her retirement. We also like to recognize Michelle Lyons, full year secretary in the athletics department. I've been told she's been with us in the Dartmouth Public Schools for approximately 15-plus years. We'd like to thank her. We'd also like to thank Ron St. John, the head custodian here at the Quinn Elementary School, as he will be retiring, I understand, this November after 37 and 1/2 years with the Dartmouth Public Schools. So, congratulations to all three of them, and we wish them a healthy retirement, healthy and happy retirement. Next up, I would typically ask for our student rep to report out, but I can see that she is not here with us tonight. We'll try to make sure that she's with us, or he is with us, at the next school committee meeting.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Could I just go back to the recognition?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sorry. I just want to thank this for being on the agenda, a recognition of the people that are our support staff out there who do so much to keep our schools running. I think this is a great idea to recognize them. I've worked with both Claire and Ron, and Ron, as a custodian, as a school principal, you don't realize how much you need a custodian who knows what he's doing. Because I can tell you, I've worked with them that don't know what they're doing, and he kept this building, kept this building in wonderful condition. And Claire, she'll be here until 6:00 at night if she has to, to make sure all kids are home safely on the bus. Those are the things you can't pay extra for. Those are things that people bring to the position. And Michelle, with her dedication, I know she was at Potter for a while, and she has worked on the committee, the prom committee. So, congratulations to all them in their retirement, and again, I wish them well. And I thank whoever put this on the agenda, because I think it's a wonderful idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Karafotis, and it was nice to add the personal details.
Yes.
I can attest that Mr. St. John probably called Dr. Karafotis today to ask him to say that.
No. He would never do that. He might have asked your mother, but not me.
He would have demanded of my mother, yes.
Thank you, Dr. K. Next up, consent agenda, fundraising activities, Dartmouth School Music Association. In your package, you should have received the fundraising requests attachment with all the cover letter, as well as all the requests for all their different fundraises through the Dartmouth School Music Association. At this time, I'll entertain any questions from members, and we also have Mr. Kingsland here in the audience to answer any questions that you may have.
So moved.
Second.
So, I have a motion by Mr. Nunes, a second by Dr. Jenkins, to approve the DSMA package. Any other discussion? I'll take Dr. Jenkins first.
So, I just want to say, we had a discussion about this and putting forward the agenda that I think it's important to know how much work the DMSA is doing to support our music program. It would not be possible without the work of this association, and I think it's, I just really think it's really important to reiterate that. I think people are very proud of our band, and rightfully so, but I also think they think that the taxes they pay fully support what they do, and they don't. There's a lot of people out there working very hard, a lot of the time, to make this happen, and so I'm thankful to those parents and volunteers to do that, but I also think it's important to reiterate whenever these things come up before the public, how much work is being done to make sure all these things happen.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. I couldn't agree with you more. Thank you to Mr. Kingsland, as well as your students, you know, your student musicians, their parents that get involved. Without them in making up the Dartmouth School Music Association, I'm sure that a lot of what you do wouldn't be possible. So, thank you. And Mr. Garth?
I will concur with both of you. What the DSMA does is tremendous, and we are one of the luckier communities in Massachusetts to have an organization to support a program that's as excellent as that is. That being said, though, I do have one question that I've asked the last couple of years, and I don't see that it's been rectified yet, so I'm wondering if maybe I'm missing something. I know that when we look at the balance sheet for the DSMA each year, there is, at the end of the year, a net gain. And that net gain is not reflected from one year to the beginning of the next, and I'm just wondering, why is that the case, and what happens to that money? Because I think we do have a great program, but I think the public who's contributing to this, you know, has the right to know a little bit more detail where some of that money is going. Because it is an awful lot of money that comes in and goes out for the quality program that we have. But at some point, this comes back to the families and the taxpayers of the community in indirect ways, and in some cases, on fairways.
Mr. Kingsland, is there anything that you could try to help Mr. Garth with on this? Help him understand. I do briefly remember something last year. Thank you, and good evening.
Hi. First of all, thank you, Dr. Jenkins, for, that's really nice, I appreciate that. And it's true. I mean, the school department does what it can, and Mr. Kylie and I work really close together, and it's a good fit, and everything works, but there's more to it, and you know that. We carry a sum of balance. I mean, we pay bills all summer long, all right? We pay on the truck insurance, we pay upcoming bills for the fall season, we carry balances for scholarship, we have an account where we're kind of saving up for new equipment, because we have a Rolling Menace tractor-trailer truck, which, you know, has a shelf life. I don't know, are you looking for something specific, Mr. Garth? Because, I mean, you keep asking this, and I want to try to help you.
Well, I guess the question is, if there's money that you are using to pay the bills at the beginning of the year, that's certainly understandable.
Right.
But that means there's money that you start the beginning of the year with. So, I, you know, if it's $20,000, it's profit from each year to the next, that makes sense.
Right. It's not like a school department budget where you have to, you know, spend your allotment by the end of June. I mean, we roll a balance into the next fall, and we keep paying out on expenses as they come along. I mean, everything that comes out of there, comes out with a check. So, if it goes in, it comes back out with a check. And I don't know. We definitely don't flatten our accounts every spring, you know?
Dr. Jenkins?
I think maybe this might be, you mentioned that you're saving money for capital, right? Because you can't borrow, you can't bond, right?
Right.
So perhaps some accounting of what the balance is, and that would help us also see, right, if you know that it's $X thousand to, but hundreds, tens, hundreds, I don't know how much that is.
Right, I can.
But, right, that people will know where that money is, and how much it is, and what it's being paid for. Because I do think that's a legitimate purpose, and we want to know that.
Right. There's balances, there's going to be balances in, like, several accounts. All right, we do scholarships, and scholarships are awarded in the spring, but they're not paid out on until a student takes care of his first semester and has made a commitment, an investment in his schooling. So, you're going to carry, you're going to carry a balance there. You're going to carry a balance in, like, we have, like I said, we're saving up for new equipment right now. We're down one vehicle, and we're feeling it. So, we're looking to do something with that. Right now, there's a decent amount of money in account for Disney that the kids are going to go on, and that's being spent faster than it's coming in. But it's going, so.
Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. If you, if you look at page four, Mr. Garth, okay, there's $40,400. Halfway down, there's a Disney, Mr. Kingsland's talking about the Disney trip, there's $40,000 there. Okay, that means, we've taken it, we've got $40,000 in already, extra, but that money's going out. So, that's part of that $53,000. So, if you knock that out, we're down to $13,000. There's like $9,000 in scholarships, so now you're talking about $4,000.
But you're going to take some money in for the Disney trip at some point, too.
We've got quite a, quite a, yeah, but there's still more money, but it's going to go out the door.
Most of it's in. The last payments are due within this month. So, most of it's in, actually. We did, we started more than a year, more than a calendar year ahead, so everyone could break it down into small payments, or access to fundraising, whatever they wanted to do. And now, it's pretty much, we're paying bills now, and they want this done. Middle of the month, we've got to be done with this.
In all fairness, you know, Dr. Kingsland, please understand, I've got the same question about every dollar that comes in to the school department.
Oh, that's fine. That's fine, you've got to know.
You know, so it's, this is not directed just at the DSMA. This is about student activity fees, this is about the school lunch fund, it's about all of it.
Right, right.
I think if we're not asking those questions, we're doing a disservice to you as much as we would be.
Oh, that's fine.
Anyone else?
No. I'm good.
I am perfectly satisfied with your explanation, as well as the account sheets that were shown, and when are you going to be performing in Disney, Adelaide? What month are you going to be down there?
It's going to be, we're on, we're going on Thursday. The performance is going to be, right now, they scheduled 10:30 on Friday.
On which month?
And it's going to be in Epcot.
Okay.
Future World in Epcot. Disney reserves the right to change the venue or the time up to two weeks before, so I'm still on their clock, but they generally try not to do it on the day you arrive and the day you leave. So, it's going to be Friday or Saturday, but it looks like it's going to be the Friday.
This is over December?
December. One, two, three, and four, we're going to be gone.
I'd love to see you down there.
Come on down.
Thank you very much.
I'll send you a postcard.
Any other discussion? Chair hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'll abstain.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Motion passes four to zero with one abstention. Thank you, Mr. Kingsland, for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, under old business, our middle school roof project update. I'll turn this over to Mr. Kylie.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. So, a couple of things have happened since we last talked about this. The MSBA appointed a owners' project manager, Atlantic Construction, and a designer. And we're in the process of beginning schematic design work for the project. So, we have a January 4th deadline submitting to the MSBA for their February board meeting, at which time they'll vote the overall project. And at this point, they've voted pieces gradually.
No, just move the microphone.
Okay. No, I'm sorry. So, we're at that point. We've gotten approval for $4,250,000 so far from town meeting. We're hopeful that that's, that's going to work out with the estimates that the designers put together, and we'll be ready to go for the summer. The thought is that we're going to do it all in one summer.
Really?
That's, that's the current thought, so. It's going to be interesting.
What's your gut tell you?
It will be a very, my gut tells me it will be an extremely busy summer.
I hope it doesn't smell.
And it will be, yeah, and we'll, we're already making plans to try and do as much, as much of the preliminary work as we can, including potentially, if it's not disruptive, some masonry work, and a whole variety of things, whatever we can do to gear up for it. So, we're, we're working hard at that right now.
It's going to be a big project.
It's a very big project.
Our plan B for starting school next year includes?
We'll, if, if it came to it, we would probably halt construction if we had to. There could be some difficult, you know, it's a partnership with MSBA, so obviously, you know, if it came to the point where, the building has so many roofs, it has 37 different roofs.
Oh, my God.
The, the bad news about that is that it makes it one of the more complex roofs that have been completed in Massachusetts in the last 10 years with the MSBA. The good news is, there's lots of places to stop and start, I guess.
Yeah.
So, you can, there's cutoff points where you can say, you know what, I'm not getting to that, there's no way we can do that right now. I obviously hope that's not the case, but we'll see.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, I heard you say, yeah, that the state assigns a project manager design, so they have a real big role in this whole project.
Yeah, it's really, you know, since, since MSBA was created, and the old Department of Ed, SBA, went away, they've really taken an active role in all of these projects. They're, they're involved in every phase. And we don't get a choice as to who we work with, which is always challenging. Every MSBA project we've worked on, we've had a different owners' project manager, which might not be our choice. If we had somebody we worked with very well, and we knew, you know, did a great job, you have some latitude to be able to, under the designer selection law, to be able to pick someone with experience in your town, or experience with like projects, and we don't really have that option. And the designer is equally, we've, we've done all our roofs with one other designer, and they do a fantastic job. So, now we have a new designer who we don't know, and who's done plenty of roofs, so, but we're, we're working with them, and it's, it's a learning process.
Right.
Is there still the potential for a wrench to be thrown into the process at this point?
A wrench in terms of, I mean, the MSBA would support, I can't imagine they wouldn't support moving forward with the project. The only, the only thing I can see is cost estimates. It's, it is very complex, and we applied for capital improvement planning funding. You were essentially relying on me, Rick Ferreira, and a engineer who we paid to come out here for half a day to take a look at it. So, I mean, it's, it's possible, we're doing test cuts right now. A lot of the, a lot of the work is below the existing roof, obviously, so everything has to come off. Decking may or may not need to be replaced on the roof. There's a whole, there's, there's a lot of things that you don't know when you're just walking around on a roof and taking measurements and saying, yeah, it should be this much per square foot. So, I mean, that could always be an issue, but if it were an issue, I don't think it would, we're early enough in the process that I think, if it wasn't a huge issue, dollar-wise, if it was a relatively minor change, maybe we could work on that with, with the town. Because we're, we'd be well before town meeting when we knew that.
Sure.
So, I, my hope is that that's not, you know, the 4.25 million is plenty.
Should be.
I don't know that.
Mr. Nunes?
Yeah, Mr. Kylie, somewhere down the line, as you talk about the being done in one summer type of deal, are they kind of looking, has there been discussions, or will there be discussions about two crews, somebody maybe, you know, some Saturdays in here type of deal?
Undoubtedly, yes. Yeah, we would require, we would require a substantial amount of labor, two or maybe three crews, working on this roof in order to get it done. So, somebody, one thing that is against us a little bit is, the MSBA rescheduled some of their board meetings. Our hope, and what we've done on the other roofs, both the ones we've done with MSBA and without, are that we try and time it so we're one of the first projects out on the market, on the bidding market. For instance, when, when we did Potter, we were out at the beginning of February. Great time, contractors are anxious to get something on the books to work on during the summer, and there's tons of competition. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to go out, the February, the February board meeting is on the 15th. Now, that's a vote of the board. We can have most everything ready to go, but it's going to be challenging to get out before, you know, to, to open bids before mid-March, which will mean that these folks have a lot of other work that they're already thinking about and trying to line up, maybe have already bid it on, bid on. So, it's, that's, that's against us a little bit, and there's only, there's a relatively few number of roofing firms who can complete a project like this, who can get the kind of staff necessary to do that, so. There's some challenges. It's, it's, it's a big, big project, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Kylie.
You're welcome.
Superintendent's update, Dr. Gifford.
Yes, thank you. A couple of things I want to bring to your attention. The long-awaited comprehensive emergency management plan is done. It is at the printers. It is, we will get a draft for finalization, make sure that we're okay with that. All of the fire department chiefs, and the police department chief, and Mr. Krestman have all been part of it, and they've all signed their, you know, signature on the dotted line, saying they were partners in this, so we'll be expecting that in time for our October 12th early release day. So, our staff will be able to, our principals, our admin team will be presenting and working with our teachers, rolling that out. So, we're very pleased with the, with the outcome, and hope that it will help guide us in any future events that we have, have take place. The Healthy Dartmouth Committee started off again this year, and I wanted to bring to your attention that as part of our community series presentation, which I hope you all pay attention to, the, matter of fact, we have an event happening tonight on depression and anxiety over at the high school. But we had Chris Heron last week, and a number of you were there as well. He was, again, presented a passionate story, and I think it got to a number of folks that were there. I received a couple of emails today from staff members who attended, who told how they had invited folks from their family to come, and luckily, they did, and people that needed some help, and they reached out to Mr. Heron afterwards, so they were very happy that we're really paying attention to this substance abuse issue in our community, and the more we bring awareness to, the more help we hope folks can get. We also had, we partnered with, matter of fact, a few of our folks attended the UMass, it was actually not through UMass, but it was at UMass, a recovery walk, and I know that Elizabeth and Laurie Jodwin were there. I'm not quite sure who else helped out. Kathy Thomas, as well, from the high school, helped out with that for that day, just another partnership that we've got going with our community. We also, I wanted you to know that we have been able to hire our truancy residency officer, and we brought Chris, Christopher Winterson on. He has been working for us as a security guard over at the high school, and he's a retired New Bedford police officer, 30 some odd years, so, which is good for us, because, again, knowing the community of New Bedford, which unfortunately, that's where we have some of our issues, our flags, where we have to check on residency, et cetera. So, I believe, he was supposed to start off this morning, I'm not sure, I didn't see them. So, he did come in, so we're really looking forward to having him on board, because we do need some help with that department. I'm going to ask Beth in a moment to come up. I wanted you to know about the resource fair that's coming up, and she's a much better expert, but you can come on up, Beth, if you will. And I see Kathleen Amaral is here as well, our wonderful CPAC leader, who is done, doing phenomenal work for our district, and wait till you hear what's happening with the resource fair this year. But before I get to that, I also emailed you late this afternoon. If you did not see it, just check your email. It was a document, excuse me, a statement by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents on the charter school issue and the ballot question. So, while, you know, I cannot speak on that, I did let you know what the, this is a public document that the association put out on that, and my suggestion will be that possibly, if the committee so chooses, that we put this on our agenda for next meeting. Many school committees have taken a vote of support or non-support on that ballot issue, so it's just, again, it doesn't go anywhere, but it is, it's a statement of support or non-support.
I think that's something that I brought up in the past, and I'll, I'll bring it up a little bit again on the mic.
Okay, good, so that's what I've been, and other than that, I, I asked if they would kind of come up and during my report, just give a little bit of a highlight of what's happening at the resource fair.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, and thank you for having us tonight. So, I'm here today, and I did ask Kathleen Amaral to join me, because she was in the audience, and I'm so glad that she's here tonight, because we're about to kick off in just a few short weeks, our fourth annual Southeastern Massachusetts Community Resource and Craft Fair. It will once again be held at Dartmouth High School. It's on October 23rd, it's a Sunday, from 10:00 to 3:00 p.m., and we certainly encourage all members of the community, as well as anybody at home, to, to please stop by any time between those hours. I just want to recognize, and I know at a Healthy Dartmouth meeting, but now that she's here, just to, once again, recognize Kathleen Amaral and Mary Ann Santos. They are the two co-chairs of the CPAC. And when you really look at the numbers over the past four years, the original fair that was four years ago had 40 tables total, and we've, we've tripled that. And so, for this year, we're looking at over 120 total tables, and that really is due to the hard work Kathleen, Mary Ann, and of course, the team of people that they work with, all of the parents of CPAC, all of the wonderful teachers who are so, so active in our CPAC, and we're so grateful. So, we do have a final, nearly final list, we're naming a couple of things, but we have approximately 70 resources that will be coming. I just wanted to highlight that some of the resources, they're not necessarily designed solely for parents who might have a student who receives special education services, although many of our resources do support students with disabilities. We are also, we do take a community approach, and so we have several resources that really are, whether it be substance use and abuse, mental health needs of the community, really, really targeting, and I am so grateful for that. So, I have the list here, and I'm, I'd be happy to email this over to you, so you can just see the full list. But we have everything from, you know, the Massachusetts Council for Exceptional Children will have a table represented there. NAMI of Bristol County will have a table. The National Alliance for Mental Illness will be there, that's NAMI. South Coast Autism Center, we have, Dartmouth Police will be represented again. Dartmouth Public Schools will have a table that will be a partnership table with Healthy Dartmouth, as well as Cope will have a joint table together. SMEC will have a table. Southeastern Massachusetts Educational Collaborative, who we're partners with and we're a member of. The Team Noah Foundation, the Wish Come True Organization. Our youth advocate, Jen Cabral, will have a table that will also include the SAD chapter that she's organizing for the first time this year. So, there's just going to be many, many resources, as well as a variety of crafters. So, there'll be really some wonderful things. One new thing to highlight, Mr. Michael Capello, our adaptive physical education teacher, will have a unified basketball game, as well as a basketball clinic throughout the day. And then, we also have performances, some music. But I did ask her to come up here with me, because this really is a lot of work, if you think about the organization of over 120 tables, between resources and crafters, and, you know, she knows she can always email me, and I'm always there to meet with her, but really, you know, her work and Mary Ann Santos's work has, has been amazing and phenomenal, and I so give them credit for that.
Thank you, Ms. Townsend, and thank you Kathleen and Mary Ann. Please pass along our thanks to Mary Ann. If any of you have had the opportunity to go to the Resource Fair, I've been there the past two years, and it's amazing to see it grow, and I can't imagine the amount of time and effort that goes into, you know, putting that together. And it truly is a wonderful, wonderful time, and it brings a lot of people together.
It does.
And thank you, especially.
Hope to see you on the 23rd.
I've already hit my accept, I'll be there on Facebook.
Okay, great.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice big round of applause for Kathleen and Mary Ann.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Gifford.
You're welcome.
Just a couple of things from me, just the, the joint conference of MASSS, MASC is coming up in November, if you didn't already have a chance to take a look at the schedule of the calendar events, I would suggest you just take a look at it, it's great, I've been there at least one day each year. You know, there's topics across the board, if you can at least find some time to go one of the days, if you can't make all, I know, I think, really, three and a half days total, I know that's a lot, a lot of time to put aside for, but I will be going for at least one or two of the days, so I hope to see some of my other colleagues there. As far as the school choice vote, I would like to see if, entertain if we could put that on next month's agenda, so we can have a conversation about it, and I assume, when is our next meeting?
October 17.
Seventeen. Seventeen.
Okay.
So that's good.
That, November 17. So I'd just like to, I'm sorry, no, October, November, just like to have a, a meeting. Why are you looking at me like that, Mr. Nuns?
No, are you, are you talking about a November meeting, or an October, the October?
Our next school, when's our next?
October 17.
October 17, okay.
You're not talking about holding a hearing, you're just talking about having a conversation.
I'm not talking about holding a hearing, I'm talking about having a conversation about the lifting the charter school cap, and what that would, what that means to...
Oh, I'm sorry, you said school choice.
Did I say school choice?
Yeah, that's why I was...
I didn't even hear school choice.
I'm sorry.
Charter school.
Let's, let me clarify, let me clarify that to the audi, to the audience, and those of you at home, we are not talking about school choice, we are talking about charter schools. Question two. And I'd like to see that added to the agenda.
May I?
Yes.
I, I understand the superintendent's reluctance to comment on her view as to whether or not it should pass or not. I do think it's entirely appropriate if the superintendent were to discuss, in her view, the implications on our district if that were to pass.
Or the, at least the public statement put out by the association.
The public release.
Because this is done jointly with all of the superintendents, so.
I think that's, I think that's fair. Okay. That's all I have, I think I've messed things up enough for tonight.
We all contribute.
Well, I was trying to figure out why you were talking about school choice, and, you know, then it, then it was like, next month.
All right, let's move on. Next regularly scheduled meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee is October 17. Anything else for the good of the committee and the community? Yes, Mr. Nuns?
Mr. Chairman, just, thank you, just want to let the committee and also people at home know that we're talking about the band tonight, and that the Music Association is hosting their annual US Band competition this coming Saturday night at Memorial Stadium. Starts at 6:00 o'clock, we've got 11 bands performing, coming from Dennis Yama, Ottawa, to New York, and such, Rhode Island, Blackstone, New Bedford, Somerset, you know, of course, we're, we're scheduled to be on right now at, somewhere in the vicinity of 20 minutes past 9:00. So it starts at 6:00, it's a great evening of entertainment, doors will open at 5:00. So, you know, come out and see, not only our kids, but if you can get there early enough, you know, come out and see what everybody else in the area, what these bands are all doing, and these kids are all doing. Also, too, on that note, my congratulations, I know we're only, you know, like halfway, not even halfway through the fall athletic season, but congrats to all the teams, they're doing tremendous. You know, you know, the LaSalle football game that we had two weeks ago was tremendous. So, my congratulations to all the, all the student athletes for what they're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Nuns. Dr. Jenkins?
I'll just remind everyone that October 19th is the deadline to register to vote. Lots of important issues coming up, so please make sure you are registered.
Speaking of important dates, October 1st is the beginning of the FAFSA application period. If you are a high school senior looking at making choices for school next year, you can start filling out your FAFSA now, and FAFSA's are based on your previous year's family income, which might mean that schools might be a little bit more affordable for some people next year than they were this past year.
Thank you, Mr. Garth. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purposes of collective bargaining with the union personnel not to reconvene.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nuns, second by Dr. Jenkins, on the motion, any discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Boucher.
Mr. Nuns?
Yes.
Dr. Karapotos?
Yes.
Mr. Garth?
Yes.
Dr. Jenkins?
Yes.
And Mr. Oliver?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned, have a wonderful night, everyone.